Good evening. I call the Hampton School Board meeting to order. Ms. Bowers, please call for the roll.
Ms. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Harper? Ms. Henry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Ms. Mugler?
Here.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
At this time, we will turn the school board meeting over to our student rep, Ms. Natalie.
Will everyone please stand as Jennifer Flores-Hagera will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Now, I will read a poem by Paul Cookson, "Let No One Steal Your Dream." Let no one steal your dream, let no one tear apart. The burning of ambition, the fire that drives inside your heart. Let no one steal your dreams, let no one tell you that you can't. Let no one hold you back, let no one tell you that you won't. Set your sights and keep them fixed, set your sights on high. Let no one steal your dreams, your only limit is the sky. Let no one steal your dreams, follow your heart, follow your soul. For only when you follow them, you will truly feel whole. Set your sights and keep them fixed, set your sights on high. Let no one steal your dreams, your only limit is the sky.
Very nice, I love that. Who did you bring with you today?
I brought my mom, dad, and my two little brothers.
Ah, great. (applause). Is there anyone from Bryan that came with you today?
My awesome principals.
Ah, awesome.
My teachers. My homeroom teacher. That's pretty much it.
What's your favorite subject in school?
Social studies and science.
Okay, very nice. When we were talking earlier, you told me something very impressive about your academics. What kind of honor roll do you have?
A honor roll.
Ooh, very nice.[208.12][208.12](applause). And when I came to visit you today, you said you were in music, but you told me you wish you were in a different resource class. Which class is that?
Art.
And, oh, what art program are you in?
Excel.
Very nice.
Great.
Do you like doing art outside of school?
Yes.
Do you have any other hobbies and activities that you like to do?
Well, I do like playing soccer with my cousins and basketball.
Okay. And what do you want to be when you grow up?
I want to be a lawyer.
Ah, great.[242.43][242.43](applause).
That's very impressive, and I know it's a little early, but are there any colleges that you're thinking about?
Harvard.
Wow. High school.[253.62][253.62](applause). And why do you want to be a lawyer?
Well, I want to help my parents go back to their old country and visit their families since they can't leave. And if they leave, they can't come back.
Okay. That's so sweet, Jennifer. Is there anything else that you want to share with us?
No, that's pretty much it.
That's pretty much it? Well, thank you very much for coming.[278.83][278.83](applause).
Jennifer, would you come back to the podium, please? Because we have a board member, Ms. Cherry, who would like to say something to you.
You know, Jennifer, when I saw you, Ms. Bowers and I were saying it's deja vu, because I don't remember how many board members will remember, but a few years back, when you were at Moton Early Childhood Center, you were the feature of a video that we did honoring the school board. And at that time, we talked about cookbooks, and some of your little classmates talked about how they cooked chicken in the oven for 50 hours, and other people, you know, put flour on the pork chop, and then they threw it on the grill for three days. And you were so articulate, at that time, as you are now, that you were one of the featured students in that video that we did to present to the school board. You remember that, Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
That was wonderful. So I want to say, I'm not surprised at all that you're standing there, and I'll see you at Harvard. Okay?
Maybe you'll see me early.
Excuse me?
Maybe you'll see me early. I'm coming here to Jones next year.
Well, there you go.[353.34][353.34](applause).
Any other remarks or comments from board members? At this time, I would like to also have Ms. Barbo to stand as the Assistant Principal. Thank you so much, Ms. Jennifer, and that was excellent. And continue to keep up the good work, and continue to read, and continue to be excited about learning. And as Ms. Cherry says, we are looking forward to you matriculate and graduate from Hampton High School, and then move on to Harvard University. So keep up the good work, okay? All righty. Next on the agenda is item 1.03, Adoption of the Agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
It's been moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Mugler and seconded by Ms. Henry that we adopt tonight's agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is item 2, which is recognition. And at this time, I will turn the meeting over to Ms. Cherry and Ms. Garble.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Tonight, we would first like to recognize the winners in the We Are 1619 Art Contest. The City of Hampton 2019 Commemorative Commission invited Hampton City School students in Grade 4 to participate in this contest. The students were tasked with creating a picture that depicted the theme of the contest, the commemoration of the arrival of the first Africans to English North America at Point Comfort, Virginia in 1619.
The Hampton City School staff identified those winners at the building levels. Then a team of commission members reviewed those submissions and selected the contest winners. Judges used a scoring rubric and considered, in looking at it, the historical significance and the historical interpretation, as well as artistic quality and creativity. So tonight, we welcome the members of the 2019 Commemorative Commission who have joined us in the audience, and we invite Commission co-chairs, Dr. Kalida Fairfax and Lieutenant Colonel Claude Van, to the stage to present awards to our students in the first, second,
Good evening, all. It's a pleasure to be here to recognize these outstanding Americans and what they're doing in school. As I was sharing with one earlier, my artistic capability is limited to stick figures, and I don't do those very well. But certainly, we want to acknowledge them. But before we get there, there are a lot of people who were involved in this adventure. And first of all, I want to recognize the members of the 2019 Commission that are here. They're located in the center of the stage here, or the audience, and we thank them. And if you would stand so everybody can see you, we appreciate it.[591.49][591.49](applause). Certainly, we thank Ann for all that she did, Ann Bain, to get us organized, and certainly appreciate all who were involved in the process. But we want to first recognize one other person, and I asked her to stand, Margaret Wilson. If you'd just stand where you are. What's significant about Margaret Wilson is she is the president of the Historical Foundation of Aberdeen Gardens. And when I said I wanted some prizes to award to the students, she came on board and says, yes, we will do that. So she will be awarding the first-place prize, and we won't ask her to come up the stairs and all that, but we will get that squared away. But I did want you to see her. We also, the second prize is being donated by the Aberdeen Gardens Historic and Civic Association. Their representative is not here. And the third prize is being awarded by the Peninsula Town Center, who participated last year in this process. So we want to thank you, and Margaret, if you'd just have a seat, and we're going to get these young Americans up here.[671.01][671.01](applause). All right. Gabriel, if you could come on forward, come on down. We've got a little packet put together. We've got a letter of commendation. You can come right up the stairs right here. A letter of commendation from Dr. Fairfax and myself, along with a certificate. And the school did an outstanding job of just recreating the picture that he drew on some cards. And I thought this was so neat, and I don't know if y'all had a chance to see that, but certainly, an outstanding effort, and we want to thank you for that. And Dr. Fairfax is going to present a coin to you from the 2019 Commission. And we want to say, job well done, keep up the good work, and maybe you can be another Harvard student like we have over there. Our second-place winner that we will be acknowledging, and I left my cheat sheet, so who was that? Do you have it listed there?
Rosabella.
Rosabella? Okay. Okay.
Ms. Rosabella Lopez?
Rosabella? Not here? Well, we have something good for her, and certainly, we'll hand it off to someone who can take it forward, and making sure that she gets here. One young man couldn't be with us here tonight, Jordan. But Jordan was swift enough to acknowledge someone to stand in for him. And Bryan, could you come on down? This young man, just as impressive as he walked in.[790.11][790.11](applause). He kind of made me want to go home and get redressed for the occasion. Stand right on in here. I know he's going to be another Harvard student in the future.[803.11][803.11](laughter). But certainly, we appreciate you standing in for Jordan.
Thank you so much.
And we ask that you pass on the packet to him with all the goodies, and Dr. Fairfax is going to give you a coin that you can pass on to him. And we really do appreciate you coming and representing well.
Thank you so much.
All right? Thank you.[829.94][829.94](applause). Akira?
Akira Yafla?
Akira, I think it's pronounced. Okay. That's what I was going to say. Correct me. This young lady also was a contestant and did just a fabulous job, and she had her drawing in, very colorful, you know? I really appreciate the color, because I just can't coordinate things like you did. She told me it took a couple days to put this portrait together, and so we want to thank you for that, and we want to recognize your efforts for all that you did, and we want you to have a coin, and congratulate you on a job well done. And I've got something that I'm going to give you too, from the Peninsula Town Center, to say thank you, and spend it well at Peninsula Town Center.[884.73][884.73](laughter).[885.73][885.73](applause). We thank the school board and everyone involved in this process. This has just been a tremendous opportunity for us to get the word out about the 400th anniversary of the first Africans that arrived at Fort Monroe. It's going to be a great time. We're going to have a lot of things that will be coming out shortly to let you know what will be happening here in your town. And we want you to get the word out, because we want a full house. Okay? So certainly, stay tuned. We've got a website coming, we're going to be doing social media, and who knows, I might even slip up and be on the TV trying to promote this effort. So thank you so much for all that you do for our kids. We're quite proud of them, and I'm looking for so many more to come forward to learn the story about 2019 and the 1619 arrival. Thank you.
Thank you.[950.61][950.61](applause).
We'd like to say thank you again to Dr. Fairfax and Lieutenant Colonel Claude Van, as well as the Commemorative Commission. You know, someone once said, in order to know where you're going, you've got to first realize from whence you came. And the Commission has done a great job in ensuring that our young students don't forget the history, and that those of us who are around now don't forget the struggles. So I think it's important, the work of the Commission, as well as the kinds of things that Ms. Wilson, the mayor of Aberdeen, is doing, to make sure that we keep everybody informed of the great history that we have. With that said, we want to say congratulations again to Rosabella, Gabriel, Jordan, and Akira. And if any parents, school administrators are here in support of them, please stand at this time and be recognized.[1003.63][1003.63](applause). Thank you, and congratulations again.
All right, next, we would actually like to recognize two students, Gabriel Edwards and Nathan Robinson. Would you please come forward at this time? And as they are coming up, Gabriel and Nathan are seniors who attend Kickattan High School, as well as the New Horizons Governor's School for Science and Technology. And just this past December, they competed in the 2017 Inter-Service Industry Trading Simulation and Education Conference in Orlando, Florida, the world's largest conference of this kind.
Now, Gabriel and Nathan were able to combine their combined knowledge of engineering and computer science. You know, usually, you have somebody who's really good in engineering, and then somebody who's good in computer science. These guys got it both. And they combined that to create a sophisticated prototype, their project, which was called "Designing and Programming of a Weight-Sensing Post-Op Shoe," earned them the first-place award within the Future Leaders Competition. So at this conference, yeah, you can clap, because that's big.[1105.23][1105.23](applause). That's major.[1107.65][1107.65](applause). And at this conference they attended in Florida, the conference provided both of them with a firsthand experience of how inter-service and industry members come together to share knowledge and how they do business. So Gabriel and Nathan are planning to not only publish their papers, but they're applying for a patent.[1131.08][1131.08](applause). Let's hear it for these wonderful Hampton City School students. Now, who is Nathan? Nathan, this is presented to you. It says, "Congratulations Certificate of Achievement. This certificate is proudly presented to Nathan Robinson of Kickattan High School and the New Horizons Governor's School for earning first place in IITSEC Future Leaders Pavilion." Congratulations.[1158.10][1158.10](applause). And this certificate says the same thing for Gabriel. It is signed, as his is, by the superintendent and the chairman of the board. Congratulations, you guys really are future leaders. And I can tell you, the kinds of things that you're doing make all of us look good. So keep up the good work, but I know you didn't do it by yourself. So those parents who are in the audience, as well as administrators from their schools, stand and be recognized.[1188.65][1188.65](applause).
And is Mr. Jonathan Torch here? Is he's not? That is actually the teacher, the GSST, computational science instructor who accompanied them to the competition, and is very proud of their work. So congratulations.
Come on, let's hear it. Every day, you don't have first-place award winners. This is excellent.[1217.83][1217.83](applause). Thank you again, congratulations, guys.
That concludes our recognition.
Mr. Gray and Councilman Moffett, could you please come back so I can acknowledge your presence here, please, sir? I'm not going to allow you to sneak out. Before we move on to the proceed with the consent agenda, we have two guests among us tonight, Councilman Jimmy Gray and Councilman Will Moffett from Hampton City Council. And at this time, we're going to interrupt with our protocol and allow you to say a few words, both to say a few words.
Good, well, thank you. We came out as a part of the 2019 Commission to celebrate the accomplishments of the young students from the 4th grade and the artwork that they did, and we appreciate great talent that we have here in our school system and in our community. And every time we have an opportunity to uplift our children and celebrate what they do, what their talents are, we want to be a part of that. So we thank you for presenting the students to the community this evening, and thank you for allowing us to be here to be a part of it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and distinguished members of the board. I just simply want to say thank you for the great job that you do each and every day on behalf of the students of the City of Hampton. And we're so proud of Hampton City Schools. Thank you very much.[1327.45][1327.45](applause).
And thank you so much for your support. At this time, we will move forward with the agenda, item 3, which is our consent agenda, which includes item 3.01, Personal Report Number 18-05. Is there a motion?
Move approval of the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Henry and seconded by Mr. Kilgore that we approve Consent Agenda, Personal Report Number 18-05. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Next item is item 4, which is the Superintendent and Staff Report. At this time, I turn the meeting over to Dr. Jeffrey Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. At this time, I would ask that Dr. Raymond Haynes would come forward, one of our Executive Directors for School Leadership, and I think Ms. Maxlow will be joining him to provide an overview of the proposed calendar for 2018-19, that particular school year, as well as the 2019 and 2020 school year. These are planning calendars. So Dr. Haynes will introduce those persons sharing information regarding the proposed calendar.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Good evening, Chairman Samuels, Vice Chairwoman Cherry, school board members, Dr. Smith, and Hampton community. We recognize that it is that time of year again to present the 2018-2019 Recommended Calendar and the 2019-2020 Draft or Planning Calendar. With me tonight are members of the Calendar Committee, as well as Mrs. Kate Maxlow, who is the facilitator of the Calendar Committee for Hampton City Schools. Kate Maxlow is also our professional learning coordinator. Mrs. Stephanie Sutton, Assistant Principal at Phillips Elementary, and Mrs. Melissa Powell-Riedel, kindergarten teacher at Burbank Elementary, will present the calendar presentation. We will stand by for any questions at the end.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
What we worked to accomplish this year was threefold. We worked to recommend a two-year calendar that supports continuous student improvement and professional learning for employees. Also, we reviewed the feedback for the 2018 to 2019, and 2019 and 2020 draft calendars. We also worked to continue to support the Regional School Calendar Agreement. We had several people to serve on our committee. Hold on one second, please.
(pause). Let me get this. Maybe it goes in the box. Wait. Move this up, or just minimize that. Yeah, it's this one. (pause). I'm sorry. Just, I'm sorry. (pause). Here's your question. All right. Go ahead. One more.
Again, we were charged, these were our tasks that we were charged to complete, to recommend a two-year calendar that supports continuous improvement of student achievement and professional learning for employees. We also got back feedback on the 2018 to 2019, and the 2019 and 2020 draft calendars. And we also continue to support the Regional School Calendar Agreement. We had several people to serve on our committee, a very diverse committee. They include parents, teachers, support personnel, community members, and administrators. At this time, I'd like to take a moment to present our members. Could you please stand if you're present? We have Nicole Brown, Joan Davis, Karen Harris Hancock, Susan Johnson, Zarifa Jones, Dan McFarland, Claire Ullit, Melissa Powell-Riedel, Nicole Samuelson, Sharon Slater, Stephanie Sutton, Kate Maxlow, Joy Charbonneau, and Dr. Raymond Haynes. And now, Missy will present the details for you.
Here you can see the process that we followed to develop the calendar. We met beginning in January 2018, incorporated the regional calendar decisions. We publicized our proposed calendars and solicited feedback via Hampton City Schools' website and email. We received and reviewed feedback from Hampton City School staff and parents, and made adjustments to our calendars. Should I click, or Dr. Haynes? Okay. The highlights of the 2018-2019 calendar are as follows. It projects instructional time and non-instructional days for the next two years. It builds in eight early release days for elementary and middle school students. It incorporates time for parent-teacher conferences in November, and includes one day of unencumbered teacher work time at the semester break. There are several key points about this calendar, including the seven pre-service days for school learning plan and teacher work days. It provides one division-wide professional development day for elementary, middle, and high school. It provides one regional professional development day at the end of the first semester, and it provides one unencumbered teacher work day at the end of the first semester. There are several additional benefits to this calendar. Firstly, because we are aligned with the regional calendar in terms of start date, Thanksgiving break, winter break, spring break, and the January Professional Development Day, it accommodates the needs of Hampton's families who are affected by neighboring divisions' calendars across the peninsula. It provides one bank day for inclement weather. Any additional days missed can be made up at the discretion of the superintendent. There are three early close days for all students and Hampton City School employees, during which all schools and offices close two hours early. And these include December 19, 2018, February 15, 2019, and May 24, 2019. This calendar also maintains spring break as the first full week in April. And at this time, we would be happy to address any questions you may have.
Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Our comments from board members? Ms. Henry?
I just want to thank Ms. Sutton and Ms. Powell-Riedel. It's a well-known truism that if you have people that do a good job, you reward them by giving them more work to do. And this committee has been rewarded by lifetime appointments. You can't resign. If they ask you to be on this committee, don't make too many If they ask you to be on this committee, don't make too many suggestions to them. They'll ask you to be on the committee, and it's a lifetime appointment. But it makes so much sense to have the calendar done as carefully as that you've managed to do it. And it's good to have a regional calendar. One of these days, our friends on the South Side will get smart and join in because it would make it easier for all of us. And their constituencies say, why don't you do what they do on the peninsula? It just really makes sense. And I know I was a big advocate for the first week in April as a fixed spring break because I know it cost my school eight points on SOLs when spring break happened right before SOL time. Just shoot me. It's a terrible, terrible thing. Teachers get grumpy if you don't get them a spring break early enough. So thank you again for taking on this lifetime appointment and doing such an excellent job that maybe you won't get any more people to join because nobody will comment. That's how you got appointed, wasn't it? If you make suggestions, they ask you to...
But we can retire.
No, Stephanie, they're not going to let you get off even if you retire. We need citizen input as well. So thank you very much for doing this for us and doing such a good job. We really appreciate it. It's a big advantage for our folks to have the calendar firmly in mind for next year as well.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes. Also, thank you for the good work you're doing. I have a question, Dr. Haynes. Last year, we talked about the possibility or the hope, just as Ms. Henry talked about, of the people from South Side coming together with us. Are we any closer to maybe closing that gap? Because I know a lot of times we have teachers and administrators who work or live on that South Side, and that would help a lot. Where are we on that?
Well...
You just answered it.
We actually have been working with the superintendents through trying to get some commonalities with the calendar aside from what we're doing on the peninsula. So I think we are a step closer, but we still have some work to do with that. It continues to be a question when we get the comments and suggestions for the calendar committee about making certain we are aligned with not just the peninsula but the South Side as well.
Or are they aligned with us?
Yes.
Because I think it's great that the peninsula, you said that, yeah, that the peninsula is least on board.
Maxlow attends the regional meetings, so she may have some additional insight.
Well, it wasn't actually at a regional meeting. I went to Regent University and just randomly sat next to somebody from the South Side's calendar committee. And so we actually did have a long talk and exchanged cards. So we're going to continue that conversation. A lot of it had to do with spring break and me trying to sell that first week in April thing.
Right.
Of course, their comment was, oh, no, they don't want us to move it away from Easter. So I think I may be convinced her a little bit to start thinking about it. So we'll keep working on it.
Yeah, because it really works over here. It really does.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Ms. Mugler?
Just a, really maybe just one comment. I don't know, maybe it might be more after I start talking. But I just found the one big difference in this particular calendar from years past was the extra day around Thanksgiving. I think families will really enjoy that. Kate's looking down like maybe I'm wrong, but I'm seeing an extra day there in November that we didn't used to have.
This was the first, this year was the first year. So this going into next year will be the second year.
Okay, okay. So, see, that tells you. I don't have children in school, so I didn't realize that.
Yes, ma'am.
My daughter's graduated now. But I think that's a great component of the calendar, and it's good for families, and we should continue that. And, you know, this year, actually, the first week of April piece does tie in with Easter. So, you know, we'll hit it or miss it here and there. But it does, you know, it does leave a level of consistency, and South Side will eventually figure out we're smart over here. Thank you for your work on the project.
I just wanted to add, in case you're looking at it, you will notice in the 2019-2020, we don't have that first day off or that Wednesday off before Thanksgiving. The reason for that is that the way that the calendar lined up was we were going to be able to get a full two weeks for Christmas. When we first started taking that Wednesday off before Thanksgiving, we said that that was the compensation for when we can't get two full weeks over that winter break. So in 2019-2020, we are going to have the full two weeks, but in order to do that, we have to add that early day on that Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
Gotcha.
Yeah, that's the trade-off, the compromise that we came up with in order to get the two full weeks.
Any other comments or questions from board members? Well, Dr. Haynes, thank you so much for that presentation, and you've answered my question.
Certainly want to thank the committee for their hard work as well. Thank you, Chairman Samuels.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, at this time, Mrs. Townsend will come forward and really facilitate the funds in terms of Fund 51, 60, 65, and 94, and will facilitate this particular presentation as it relates to the FY 2019 fiscal year.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you this evening. I'm here to do the presentation, or a group of us are here to do the presentation of other funds to the budget for the next fiscal year. I'd like to take the time right now to thank everybody that participated in the process. It is a collaborative effort for us, and especially for our staff members, Gwen Manley, Lisa Deanhofer, Ashley Ranger, who put in a lot of time to pull the information together that you're going to see this evening. The first presentation for Fund 51 will be done by Edwina Forrest for Food Nutrition Services. Fund 60 and 65 will be done by myself, and Fund 94 will be done by Beth Mayer, who is the coordinator for student activities. Ms. Forrest?
Good evening, Mr. Samuels, Dr. Smith, and school board members. Before you have the Food and Nutrition Services Fund 51 projected budget is being shown on the screen. For FY 19, we project estimated revenue of $11,445,441, with our expenditures expected at $11,979,857. Our state funds and our federal funds are estimated based on FY 18 rates. The increase in these funds are projected based on our ongoing efforts of increasing breakfast participation through breakfast item highlights and featured menu items on a monthly basis, and us continually to add breakfast in the classroom schools. Other funds are noted as interest rebates and vending. Other changes, increased costs in salaries and benefits, food costs is the same, and commodities are slightly decreased, both due to decrease in student participation, which is partially based on decrease in student enrollment. Costs for source for teacher, Food and Nutrition Services uses source for teacher to fill food service monitoring positions. Food and Nutrition Services is recommending a 10-cent increase in the paid breakfast price. You can see the breakfast comparison listed before you. Food and Nutrition Services has not increased the paid breakfast price since at least 2013, and the cost of a complete breakfast is approximately 96 cents. Paid lunch increase, the USDA provides school divisions with a tool to calculate the paid lunch increase. The 2018-2019 Paid Equity Calculator has not been released as of yet, but based on last year's Equity Calculator, Hampton City Schools will need to raise the paid lunch price 10 cents. And you can see the breakdown over the past few years. And the last slide shows the comparison of our lunch prices compared to other school divisions. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions? Our comments from board members? Ms. Henry?
I really think we forget sometimes that all the folks that work for you are among the most dedicated and most devoted to our students of all the employees in Hampton City Schools. And I think it's never a bad idea to point out that we are considerably less in what we charge than anyone in the surrounding area. And while we don't like to raise prices, you are required to be a break-even industry. You can't give money away and give food away. We have to do this. And I also wanted to mention that while the enrollment has gone down, participation in school breakfast and school lunches has gone up consistently in Hampton City Schools. And I think you're to be commended for that as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Henry.
Okay. No further questions or remarks from board members? Ms. Edwina, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to discuss the reimbursable projects, which are grant fundings for Hampton City Schools. As you can see, overall, we had a slight decline from the previous year of $113,496, which was about 0.54%. I will show you details on all the funds, state, federal, tuition, and other. Our state funds overall declined by 10.8%. Our federal funds declined by 1.4%. Our tuition is level-funded, and our other funds actually increased by 11.37%. Our state funding, as you can see, we've had a number of declines, very few increases in state funding over the last few years. We are working in an environment where each year we lose a little bit more funding from the state. Many of the grants that we've had, and our grants tend to cover a period of anywhere from 18 months to three years. So many of our grants are now ending for this year, so you see a decline overall of $124,291, and that's the 10.8% overall that you see between the funds. We did have a new grant for teacher recruitment and retention of $74,000, and Teacher Mentor Program of $22,115, and the Career Switchers Program of $6,000. So the state is putting in funding to help retain teachers at our school level. For federal funds, we had a decline of $205,18. The funding overall is there again. Most of the grants, many of the grants are declining. There are many applications that are pending at this point, and we don't have final numbers for next year. So one of the things with the grants, while we may show a decline now, ultimately, we may end up in an increased position once we know what the new funding is going forward. We did have an increase in our Title I fund, and we received a new grant from Title IV for student support and academic achievement. So we do have some areas where we've gotten increased funding from the districts, from the federal funds, as we move forward. Our total tuition, which is within Hampton City Schools, we level fund these. We look at trend to see where we are, and they pretty much have stayed the same over the last few years. And then in our other funds, we had an increase of $211,309, or a net increase of 11.37%. Most of our other funds are in the same category as our federal and state, where they're in a position of the grants are ending, and so they are declining. We do have an increase in our CPAG television, where CPAG receives funding from Cox and Verizon based on subscription fees. And they've opted to use some of that revenue to carry forward for capital outlay for next fiscal year, as well as an increase in our one-to-one initiative repairs and an increase in our CPR program. And these are programs that are initiated within the school level, that there are fees charged for the services that are presented. Are there any questions on reimbursable projects before I move forward to rental income?
Are there any questions or remarks from board members? Ms. Mugler?
I just have one question on the reimbursable piece, and that is, in some of these categories, the decrease connected to the declining enrollment?
Not, no, not necessarily. It's not based on enrollment. It's based on what has been awarded for that grant. So the grant may have been awarded, say, for Title I. It was awarded for 2016. But we have anywhere from 18 months to three years to spend that money. So over time, that money has declined. So it's based upon that. At any given point in time, we have three years' worth of grants that are being used within the system. And so based upon that, the award amount will decline, and it's not based upon enrollment. It's based upon the application that has been presented to the grantor and what they have awarded to us for that timeframe.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other further comments or questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Viso.
You're welcome. I'm also here to present the rental income for the school district, and this is where we have repurposed buildings, and we are renting them out to various agencies for their projects that they have going. As you can see, overall, rental revenues will decline by $51,893 for a decrease of 24.29% for next fiscal year. This is due primarily to the rental of Girls, Inc. They left their lease this year, and so they won't be moving forward with us for next fiscal year. In every other area, we basically looked at trend, and we've kind of tried to just, based upon trend, we've decreased certain areas where we have not received any income in the last few years. Our rental for the Office of Human Affairs, there's a 3% escalation clause within their contract, and that's where the increase is coming from. The other areas are Source for Teachers, and our downtown Hampton Child Development has no escalation clause, and they are level-funded for next fiscal year. Are there any questions?
From board members?
Okay, at this time, Ms. Beth Mayer will come forward on student activities.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Mayer.
Page one of Fund 94 shows the projected budget for the Hampton City Schools Athletic Department for 2018-2019, which is $496,000. This revenue is down $23,000 compared to the 2017-18 budget. The decrease is shown in two lines, miscellaneous and activity fees. The revenue decrease in the miscellaneous line is due to the loss of stadium passes and presell tickets in the last three years. The second line item that shows a decrease in revenue is our activity fees. Student participation is down slightly, therefore causing a decrease in funds. All other revenues are the same as the 17-18 budget. Page two is the breakdown of the appropriations for the 18-19 budget. Within the appropriations, swimming pool rentals increased by $2,000. This is due to a facility rental increase and an increase in time at the pools. The other increase you will see further down in the line item labeled amusement tax. Although the Athletic Department has paid the city tax for our football, volleyball, basketball, and wrestling gate receipts in the past, Ms. Townsend and I wanted to show it as a line item on our budget. Using trend data for the last three years, several line items have been adjusted in order to balance the budget with the projected decrease in revenue. The line items adjusted to lower the amount are the high school allocations, security, officials, workers, contingency, football insurance, and communication technology. Multitasking here. Slide three shows what each high school will receive in funding for athletic programs. Most sports will see a decrease of $50 at each school, and certain line items will see more than $50 decrease. The total cost of appropriations to our schools is $57,005, which is a total of $228,020. Did I do that? Nope. Slide four adds the numbers from slide three, showing the total money allocated for each And on slide five, the additional appropriations are added to the high school allocations, and this gives you a look at all the appropriations. And that is it. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Are there any questions or comments from board members? Ms. Mugler?
Just take me back to the amusement tax.
Yes, ma'am.
Tell me again what, that's football games?
It is. When we sell a ticket at our football, basketball, wrestling, volleyball games, we pay 10% city tax, amusement tax. Then, also to add, but we pay a stadium tax to the Darling Stadium, but just the city taxes, football, basketball, wrestling, and volleyball. And like I said, we've been paying it for a while, and we just didn't show it on the budget.
And you said that's 6%?
10%.
10%. Yes, ma'am.
10.
Even worse. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes. Thanks, Ms. Mayer. I know from years of working with you, you hate to do this, but you do a great job. I can tell you.
You know you can't tell, can you?
And first of all, I'd like to at least thank you and the people, I think it was in Finance Department, who worked to make sure that we brought the participation fees in line from school to school, because at one time, one cheerleader may be paying more to be a cheerleader at Kick-A-Tan than at Bethel and that kind of thing. So I'm glad that we brought that in line. But I just have a question. I actually have a couple, but I want to ask this one. When you talked about the loss of stadium passes?
Yes.
Could you explain that a little bit?
It's the Darling Stadium pass.
So are you saying the numbers are less, or people lost the passes?
The numbers, that people are buying or not buying the pass.
Because I think I saw like $33,000 up there.
It was. And I didn't really lower that for the last couple of years, because I was hoping it would come back up.
Right.
But it didn't. And so I wanted to-
Because that used to be, correct me, that used to be a moneymaker.
A very big moneymaker. We used to, we used to sell sometimes it's 200 Darling Stadium passes. And I would say within the last seven years, it's slowly declining. And so we tried to advertise more, we tried to lower the price, and nothing seems to work. They don't want that stadium pass, and we're not quite sure.
Would you attribute that to, partly to the fact that because of the realignment of VHSL and the way we have to play people, that we're playing everybody in the free world and moving on? Would you think that maybe the interest has died?
I think-
Because of what's going on at Darling Stadium as opposed to what went on? Because you used to have people lined up at your office waiting to get stadium passes.
Right. I think, yes, Ms. Cherry, I think that is one of the reasons, is when the VHSL changed their alignment, it kind of threw our whole community off. And they weren't quite sure what they were seeing and what game meant what.
Right.
And now that it's kind of settled down, it's changed a little bit, now it's settled down, people will see that it's really kind of back to the same place we were 10 years ago.
Right.
So we're going to make a push.
Okay.
Make a push. We see a low number on that, but I'm having a lot of success with my sponsorships.
Well, I figured if one door closed, you'd open another.
Yes.
So I'm sure of that.
We were able to buy two scoreboards for a Kick-A-Tan this year, one for baseball and one for softball. We bought a Hampton baseball scoreboard. We're buying some things for Phoebus so they can get the scoreboards, or the basketball hoops up and down. So we're making a lot of money that way.
Are we still selling the bricks?
You know what? We have filled the wall.
All right.
How about that?
Well, thank you to our sponsors for that.
I just sold the last three bricks. And so I have a couple NFL players that want to build another wall.
Well, that's wonderful. Thank you.
So we'll try to do that.
Appreciate it. Really appreciate your hard work.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Okay, I have some follow-up question to Ms. Mugler. In reference to the tax, that 10% tax, is that the norm across the school division to pay a city an amusement tax?
I don't know, Mr. Samuels. All I can tell you is that if we're at a gate, whether it's Darling Stadium or Phoebus High School, we pay a tax. Now, I'm not sure if we pay a tax for like, let's say, a play, you know, one act play or not, but-
What is it in the school division?
I don't know, but we've always been assessed that.
We've always been assessed at 10%?
Yes.
Ms., you can come to the podium, Ms. Visel.
As Ms. Mayer alluded to, we've always paid the amusement tax, but the way it was being paid, it was paid out of a revenue account, and so it wasn't shown as part of the budget. It just decreased the amount of revenue that was seen on a monthly financial statement. And so in order to show transparency and so that you could really see what we're paying on an annual basis, we decided this year to pull it out and show it as a revenue and a revenue and expense. So you can see the revenue that comes in for it and the expenditure that's paid out for it.
Right.
And that's not negotiable?
It has not been. I will be more than happy to talk to the city finance manager.
Yeah, and I think this, Mr. Chairman, also, you've got to remember, in some of the larger school divisions, they have their own stadiums where they play, and we have to rely on Darling Stadium.
Okay. Second, in regards to, you say there's a, a activity fees that has somewhat decreased. Is that, could that be attributed to possibly a lot of rec leagues, that a lot of our, not activities fee, but activities, that many of our children are not participating in school activities? Could that be attributed to recreational leagues and so forth?
I don't think so. I attribute to, I don't know if the enrollment in the high schools have gone down, but that's the only possible thought I have. We have, all of our sports are open, but we're just not fielding the teams. And it's, in a lot of places, we're not filling the JV teams.
Well, I had a similar experience. My daughter, she's at Hampton High, and they were having some difficulty filling the JV girl soccer team. So what they did, they just merged the JV and varsity team to combine that. Third and last, Ms. Mayer, in regards to the pool, you said that there's an increase in the fees. How many pools are we using that are not, because we don't own any pools?
Correct. We use two that charge us, Hampton University-
Okay.
And the YMCA.
The YMCA?
Yes.
Have, is there any thought about possibly using the pool that is at the Centerra, the old Centerra, that's the learning center?
Yes, sir. We do use that for Bethel High School.
For Bethel High School.
Yes, sir.
And is there a cost associated with that pool?
No.
Good, good. Okay. So we may want to encourage the other teams to possibly get on the bus and head over there if there's no cost.
It would be wonderful to be able to do that.
Okay.
The thing we run into is we have such a large amount of children at Kick-Tan swimming, and the only place to house them is having them swim-
Is Hampton University.
Is the YMCA.
YMCA?
Yes, sir.
All right. Joel, I see you nodding your head. Do you have any questions, or are you very familiar with that?
I got a big team at Kick-A-Tan.
We have a big team, yeah.
Yes, they do.
Okay. Ms. Beth Mayer, you did a fantastic job. I didn't see any nervousness and sweat or anything as such. It's like that analogy, you see the duck on the pond, but you never see that, the feet that-
You're being too kind. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. And at this time, Ms. Townsend will come and provide you with the business operations financial report at this time. Ms. Townsend?
Good evening again.
Good evening again.
Three times the charm. I'm here this evening to present the financial statements for January 31, 2018, for our revenues, expenditures, and encumbrances. Our revenues and expenditures at this time of the year are right on target. Our revenues are $105,334,23, and our expenditures are $115,615,894. This revenue is based on our projected average daily membership of 19,250 students. The fall membership report was submitted to the state in September, and we had 19,069 students. Based on our prior year's trends, we are projecting a March ADM of 18,985, which would give us 265 fewer students than what our budget has been based upon. This decrease in enrollment will result in a $1.5 million decrease in revenue for us this year. The monthly report also includes categorical transfers for category nine, and at this time, if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Are there any questions from board members?
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Visel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes superintendent and staff reports.
All right. Did someone say something? Okay, at this time, we will have, move along with the agenda, item five, which is hearing of any delegation, delegations, or presentation of any written communications or petition. We do have one petition request before us, and at this time, Ms. Bowers, could you please read the protocol? And immediately after that, I will call the person to the podium.
Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forms are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk. Each individual will have five minutes to speak. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum on policy issues. Speakers shall not address matters involving individual students, as these topics may violate confidentiality and are not appropriate in a public forum. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards, or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the school board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bowers, for reading the protocol. At this time, we'll have David Dietrich.
Good evening, Chairman Samuels, members of the school board, Superintendent Smith. My name is David Dietrich, 139 Wilderness Road in Hampton. This evening, I'd like to address school security. Couple preliminaries. Every child, every day, whatever it takes. The Hampton City School Board is charged by the statutes of Virginia and the regulations of the Virginia Board of Education to provide and operate the public schools of Hampton, Virginia. It is a function of the board to set general school policy and within the framework of Virginia Board of Education regulations to establish guidelines that will ensure the proper administration of the city school program. School board's mission statement: To actively represent the community, to focus support for every child's success. Nowhere in either this mission statement or the board's goals is school security identified. How are you representing the community in this way and our children? Moving on to school security, what is the situation we have today in the United States? There've been a number of school shootings, mass school shootings, over the last decades. Columbine High School, 1999, 13 people were killed, 24 wounded. Nickel Mines, Pennsylvania, 2006, five female students were killed, six were wounded. Virginia Tech, April 2007, 32 people killed and 17 wounded. Sandy Hook Elementary School in October 2012, 26 people were killed. Marshall County High School, 2018, in January, two students killed and 18 wounded. And finally, Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School, February 14, 2018, 17 people were killed and 12 were wounded. What are the common threads in all of these shootings? First of all, armed gunmen entered a school, and these schools are all gun-free, also known as defenseless zones. There was a mass shooting, multiple unarmed victims resulted, and multiple deaths. There was a late or even no response by law enforcement before the killing was over. And there still has been no effective change, as far as I know, in our school policy. In the Marjory Stoneman shooting in particular, the on-scene school resource officer failed to engage the gunman. In addition, the responding law enforcement officers also failed to engage. Nothing was done until the shooting ended. The suspect was apprehended after leaving the school, and so that's very problematic. So what is it we have with Hampton City Schools? There are insufficient school resource officers at our schools. The most vulnerable children, in other words, the elementary schools, are rarely protected by an armed officer. Why would you expect our police to perform any better than those at Marjory Stoneman? Police response time, according to National Service, Sheriff's Association, in 2016, average school shooting lasts 12 minutes, and the average of police response time is 18 minutes. Even if it's less time, the point is, when seconds count, police arrive in minutes. How can we change this formula? U.S. Supreme Court, over many rulings, has said that no special relationship exists between police and appellant, and it is, and police are under no general duty to provide public services, such as police protection, to any individual citizen. And I can go on with that. So what is the situation? What are our options today for protecting our children? Passive defense, walls, fences, gates, doors, entry control points, electronic surveillance? What is the cost of these? Can we afford them? How effective, actually, are they when a gunman gets inside the school? So then there's active defense. For immediate response, a would-be victim is armed. A would-be victim is trained, provides a fighting chance for that person, possibly with other weapons. Or a delayed response through a multi-layered approach, armed school resource officer, armed school security officer, armed administrators, armed teachers, armed visitors even, or even volunteers. What's the cost of each, and how effective are they? Both U.S. Code and state code authorize armed agents in the schools to protect our children under certain circumstances. So are you going to wait for the government to disarm law-abiding citizens, or are you going to do something more actively? I request that you establish a town hall forum to meet with the citizens of Hampton to discuss this and produce a real effective solution to this very real danger for our children. Final thoughts? Only two people are always at a shooting, and they are the shooter and the victims. Thank you very kindly for your time.
Next on the agenda is item six, which is deliberation, which include item 6.01 software financing resolution, item 6.02, revision of school board policy, GBAB, and item 6.03, revision of school board policy, JB. Ms. Ruth?
Good evening. The, regarding the software financing resolution, the business operating software system is the backbone of all of Hampton City Schools' financial responsibilities. The resolution before you tonight will allow Hampton City Schools to finance changes that will ensure the long-term stability of our financial and human resources, systems, and processes.
Are there any questions? Are there any questions and remarks from board members? Okay. You may proceed.
Okay. And regarding the policies, GBAB, and the corresponding regulation, GBAB-R, as we discussed in the last meeting, those are all regulatory changes.
Okay, and you provide us with subsequent information in regard to those items? All righty.
Okay.
Are there any questions? Ms. Mugler?
Just a question on the resolution. Would it be helpful to the administration if we moved that forward to action?
Yes, it would.
Okay. So is there a motion?
I move that we move the resolution, item 6.01, onto our action agenda tonight.
Second? It's been moved by Ms. Mugler that we move action 0.6.01, software financing resolution, and seconded by Ms. Henry. Is there any discussion? Here and now, Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye. With that said, then, we will add this item to the items for action, and the software, software financing resolution will become item 7.04.
Mr. Chairman, vote approval of action agenda?
Five? Okay. 7.05.
Yes.
Thank you so much. At this time, we move to agenda seven, which is items for action. Is there a-
Move approval of action agenda, Mr. Chairman?
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All righty. It's been moved by Ms. Henry and seconded by Ms. Cherry that we approve action items 7.1 through 7.05. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, usually these items are under our consent agenda, and they're down on action. I would assume that's because there was one or more board member not present at those meetings. I don't know.
There was one member not present, but he's not present tonight either, so.
So there will not be an issue moving forward. Thank you so much, Ms. Bowers, for that explanation. Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye. I missed it. I missed it. The 7.0.
Oh.
My apologies. All right, next item is item eight, which is information. Our next meeting will be held at 6:30 PM on March the 14th, 2018, at Jones Magnet Middle School. Budget hearing, budget meetings are scheduled for March the 14th, the 21st, and the 28th at 6:30 PM at Jones Magnet Middle School. And the 28th is, if necessary, is that so, Dr. Smith? If necessary. Are there any other information to be shared by the, by board members and the superintendent?
Just to share, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, that tomorrow is an exciting day for us. Our rising 10th grade students and their parents will be able to go into the Power School Parent Portal and review, and confirm, not only review, but also confirm their child's college and career, academy and pathway placement for the upcoming school year. And so this will certainly go live, starting tomorrow through March the 16th. And I'm very happy to say and to report that 97% of our rising 10th graders were able to receive their first academy and pathway of choice. And so I want to commend the staff for an outstanding job. And as we're talking about the academies, I look forward to, at the conclusion of this particular meeting, traveling to Northern Virginia, to George Mason University, and to participate there tomorrow with our former State Education Secretary, Ann Holton, as well as the former United States Secretary of Education, Arne Duncan, as a part of a panel discussion on tomorrow regarding jobs for the future. And so we're excited to really feature Hampton City Schools and the wonderful work that's going on here. And so we're excited about that. Finally, I want to say on a very sad note that we offer our condolences to the family of Mr. Lloyd McKenzie. Mr. McKenzie was a valued member of the PEG TV family, and whether operating the cameras at City Hall or for us here, he did it with such great commitment, commitment, and with a positive attitude. And we will greatly miss Mr. Lloyd McKenzie, certainly in his passing. Funeral services will be held on tomorrow in Washington, D.C. And we certainly send our thoughts and prayers and support to his family. He will be dearly missed as a part of our team. And I know that we have a number of staff members of the PEG TV team who will be traveling to Washington, D.C. on tomorrow as a, as a part of the family for Mr. Lloyd McKenzie. And so I do want to make that acknowledgement as well.
Thank you so much, Dr. Smith. And also, in reference to Lloyd McKenzie, Lloyd McKenzie is a graduate of Norfolk State University, so, and he was a member of the Peninsula Alumni Association, and he will be deeply missed by the Norfolk State Alumni Association. So thank you, Dr. Smith, for sharing that. And Ms. Natalie Kidd, do you have anything to share from the student rep perspective?
No. Not today. Sorry.
At this time, our meeting is adjourned.